All right, go on.
All right, thank you. Good evening and welcome to the December 8th, 2014 meeting of the Town of Scarborough Planning Board. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Karen, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Ogless, Mr. Buffard.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Mr. Fellowes.
Here.
Mr. Paul.
Here.
Mr. DuPont and Mr. Mazur.
Here.
And would you, for the record, please indicate that Mr. McGee is a voting member this evening with the absence of Mr. DuPont? Our first item on the agenda this evening is the approval of minutes of November 17th, 2014. I move to approve.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
I have to abstain.
Any opposed? We have one abstention, so four in favor, no opposed, one abstention. Our next item this evening, item number four, is a consent item. Waterhouse Acres subdivision, Richard Waterhouse requests the final subdivision review for a three lot subdivision off West Beach Ridge Road. And this is a consent item. Mr. Chase, could you introduce this, please?
Sure, absolutely. Yes, this is an item that received board approval, or preliminary approval, on November 17th. At that time, the board was satisfied with the overall plans and really had no remaining questions, and so moved it to a consent item for approval this evening. Just by way of background, this is a three lot residential subdivision in the Rural and Farming Zone, RF District, which required a conservation subdivision design approach. The board heard this item through the month of October, held public comment on it as well. And with that, and based on the board's previous discussion, preliminary approval, we've drafted a draft, a motion for the board to consider this evening.
That's all I have for you. I believe it's right there. Oh, that's in the middle of the screen.
I think I sent that out for you. That's right. Sorry, that was part of my staff comments that I sent out earlier. Yes, this one, this one can be struck because it's been dealt with.
Gotcha, thank you. So I will make it a motion so that we can have discussion at some point. At the board's November 17th meeting, the item received preliminary approval. At that time, the board agreed to consider the final approval as a consent item. Staff has reviewed the final plan submission and no further comments from staff. So, having said that, I move that the application, Richard Waterhouse, for the plan titled Conservation Subdivision Plan of Waterhouse Acres, as prepared by Sebago Technics dated 11/1814. The subdivision creates three residential lots with frontage along West Reef, West Beach Ridge Road and an open space parcel consistent with the requirements of Section 7A of the Scarborough Zoning Ordinance and the review criteria of the subdivision ordinance with the following conditions. One, prior to the release of the Mylar, the applicant shall pay the traffic impact fees. Two, prior to the issuance of a building permit for lots one and three, a $250 recreation contribution fee shall be paid. And three, prior to the issuance of a building permit for any of the lots, the required delineation markers for the 25-foot no disturb buffer zone to the wetlands shall be installed. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Ron. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor? And I show that to be unanimous.
I'll give it to Karen.
Thank you. As mentioned earlier, our next item on the agenda has been tabled at the request of the applicant, that being the Habitat for Humanity for Greater Portland, requesting a final subdivision review for a 13 lot residential subdivision off Broad Turn Road called Foster Farms Subdivision Two. Moving on, item number six, Mainly Tubbs requests a site plan amendment review for a four, excuse me, for 415 Payne Road. Mr. Chase?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just trying to call up the site plan here so folks can see what we're talking about. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. As just noted, this application is before the board for a change of use at 415 Payne Road. Ostensibly, the crux of the review really has to do with parking calculations. Back in, I believe it was 19, yes, it was 1999, the planning board approved, this is a site of the form, of the mill stores, now formerly mill stores, the board approved a reduced parking allowance at the site, as is allowed through the town's off-street parking regulations in the zoning ordinance. At that time, the site would have been required to build 138 parking spaces, but the board, through the regulations of the zoning ordinance, the review criteria therein, allowed for the development of 75 parking spaces based on that particular use. The approval was conditioned that any change of use would require board action. As was just noted, Mill Stores has closed and Mainly Tubbs is looking to occupy the space. In addition to occupying the existing space, they're also actually looking to do some reconfiguration, reconfiguration on the interior and add some, some more square footage in a mezzanine type area, which triggered another look at the parking on-site. The required parking for the proposed activities would require typically 86 parking spaces per our regulations. Our regulations have changed pretty significantly from 99 to today's standards in terms of the type of activities, so again, the proposed usage that these folks are looking for would require 86 spaces with some parking reconfiguration, i.e. narrower parking spaces. We used to require 10-foot parking spaces. We now allow 9-foot. They can accommodate, without any additional pavement, 83 parking spaces, so they're three spaces short. So, really, other than some restriping and internal work, they aren't changing the site ostensibly, it's just, as I said, repurposing. So, really, the question for the board, before the board tonight, is applying those standards of Section 11C of the zoning ordinance, which speaks to off-street parking and the board's allow, ability to allow reduced parking on-site. Is the board confident that what the applicant's proposing can be carried on with the proposed 83 parking spaces? So that's the crux of the conversation. I believe the board, you know, staff felt that the board was comfortable. We have drafted a motion for the board to consider if you are comfortable with what is being proposed this evening. So with that, turn back to you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chase. I would like to remind the board that prior to the last meeting with this board, there was an administrative approval made for this site that allowed for the ability of the applicant to be able to provide a small ramp, a drive-up ramp into a new warehousing location that they were looking for on the site, which in fact was approved. So, just kind of remind the board of that. And at this point, I'll turn it over to the applicant. Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for the thorough introduction, Jay. My name's Mike Tatum-Wieland. I'm an engineer with Face, Boffin, and Thorne Dyke. I'm here with Jim Van Fleet of Mainly Tubbs and Jim Biscop of Biscop Construction. I'll just give you a little introduction, but I'm sure most people know the area in question, but the existing Mainly Tubbs site is at 408 Payne Road, and they're looking to relocate nearly across the street at the site of the existing mill stores. As Jay mentioned, we're here really to seek a reduction in the required number of parking spaces. When you calculate the number of spaces per code, the uses, total requirement of 86 spaces, with the restriping that's planned, will achieve 83 spaces. That said, Mainly Tubbs experience across the street really indicates they have 25 to 30 customers a day, so their, their parking demand is really expected to be much less than the 83 they're going to provide. So, by restriping, we're doing what we can to get as close as possible to the required 86, really without, without adding impervious area. Other than that, the site will remain as it is today, was last approved in 1999, as Jay said. I can also point you to the location of the ramp that was approved, that Chairman Paul referred to. It's on the south side of the building in this location, but other than that, the proposal is to keep the site as it is today. So, with that, we're happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Great, thank you. Before I turn this over to the board, the public does have an opportunity for public comment this evening. There's anybody who is here who would like to comment on this particular item, please feel free to approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. We ask that you try to keep your comments to five minutes or less. Seeing no one running up, I'm going to assume that we do not need public comment on this item, and I will in fact turn it over to the board. Mr. McGee, would you like to start us?
Sure. Do you have any intention of using the outdoor sales area?
Yes, but not right away.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is whether or not it would be prudent to maybe have a handicap spot nearer to the outdoor sales area for somebody to strip it in.
I think there are three handicap spots there right now that may not show on that chart, but
You have it here.
Whether we need to add depends on what products we might put out there. It's kind of an open opportunity for us right now, and I don't really have a significant plan that I can report on.
Sir, could I ask you to state your name for the record, please?
Yes, I'm Jim Van Fleet. I'm the owner of Mainly Tubbs.
Thank you.
I would, I just didn't, I think I'd encourage you, whether or not required of you by law, to maybe try to get one towards the, towards one of the parking spots near the outdoor sales area, just for the sake of those that might
For access by handicap people to the, yeah. I mean, I think we have to make some other changes, too, because there's probably an elevation of asphalt there that a wheelchair, for instance, couldn't get across, so.
Outside of that, I have, I have no problems with reducing the number of parking spaces.
Thank you, Nick. Jay?
I'm fine with the number of parking spaces as well. Just a couple of minor things. The sign I see on the plan, the existing sign, are you going to have a sign in a similar location, or are you going to make any major changes?
I don't think we're going to make a major, major change. I like the idea that they had an electronic sign there just so that we could tell people that we were moving in a few months, so that was advantageous, but we have two proposals out for signs right now, and it would be in the manner of, and consistent with what we already have down at 408, if anything, it would stay largely the same because we want some kind of visual continuity.
What about landscaping plan? Do you, do you plan on doing anything along the road?
The, in my existing neighborhood, I planted trees and have grass open enough so there's some visibility of the products that we have on our farmer's porch and that sort of thing. So I like the fact that there are already plenty of trees on one side. The elevation of that mound is, is a little high for me, so whether we bring that down and plant some other shrubbery, my opinion is that the building needs some aesthetic help. And so I would have some intentions.
To be determined.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dave. Mr. Fellowes?
I don't think I have much to add. I think I'm okay with this, too, and no need to create more impervious surface, and I think even if you're successful in kind of expanding your operations based on the history, you should have more than enough, and
You know, we have 33 spaces now where we are, and so this is not quite tripling the existing spaces that have proved satisfactory now, and our staff has grown a fair amount as well, so it's a, it's a, it's a neat success story, but we understand with it comes the import of staying within guidelines, so.
Thanks.
All right, thank you, Corey. Mr. Mazur?
Yeah, I just have one comment for staff. If they are working with new signs, do they have to come up to the new sign ordinances, the sign specifications that we now have in effect?
Well, they would have to submit a sign permit, which the code officer would, would look at, but in terms of, as was just mentioned, they do have an electronic reader board that was approved, so sort of reusing that wouldn't be problematic if they stay within the same general parameters of the existing sign. I don't think there'd be any issues. If there were to be significant changes, then we may have to look at that, you know, a little further just to see what's going on there, but I don't foresee any issues with what he's talking about or what may be permitted on the site.
How many years have you been in business now?
Pardon me?
How many years have you been in business?
Well, 37 years.
Yeah, see, I, I want to commend you on that. You know, it's not that often that businesses, local owned businesses, stay in existence that long, so kudos to you.
Well, we have had, we've been blessed with a lot of success, and, and, thank you.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Ron. I guess the only question that I have is, and also I am not opposed to the reduction in spaces, certainly a couple of things do come to mind. Normally, when we do this, we always ask the question that in the event the needed spaces weren't, or the, the additional spaces were needed, where, if any place, could they be placed on the existing site? I've been early talking through, so I don't think we've got a big issue here, but it's just for the record.
Yeah. I don't have a vision for this area. It's now impervious as opposed to impervious, but certainly there is a fair amount of flexibility on either end of this outdoor sales area for additional parking.
Okay, that we, we normally do not ask that they be built out, obviously, right? But what we do ask is that those potential parking spaces be shown on the site plan as potential future build-out. And again, the, the, part of the purpose for doing this is that it's great that you're there, you may not have the requirements of that. We hope that in a short amount of time, you outlive this space, need to move on to something bigger, and whoever comes into that particular piece of property needs to be able to have the ability to be able to have the parking spaces that they might need for that size facility. So, because of that, again, we're not asking anybody to build anything out. All that we ask is that you show us on the site plan where you could put them.
Sure.
And that generally meets any requirement that we may have
Yeah.
in terms of, so it's a drawing issue, okay?
Sure, yeah. Can I add that, so back in 1999, when, when the board and at, at the time, the mill stores went through this process, they did just that. At the time, they were trying to get to the 138 spaces that were, that were required at the time, and what was approved at that time was a plan showing a reconfiguration of that, what's now shown as the, the outdoor sales area. I, I think it still works, oh, there it is, Jay queued it right up for us. But I think, considering that there, there really are no changes other than striping proposed to the plan, I, I think this plan would, I think this plan would work if the board is willing to accept this as sort of our, our future reserve parking plan.
The answer is yes and no, because if I approve, or we approve, that site plan as we look at it today, it does not include your ramp.
Sure.
So, I'm not asking for much here. I'm asking you to show me three spaces on the plan that you have that's approved today.
Yep, we're happy to, we're happy to provide that.
Submit it to staff. All you need to do is submit it to staff, okay? We don't need to make it any more difficult than that, but I just, in order for consistency's sake with other applicants, just want to make sure that we show a plan that is, that will work within the, the ordinance that we have today.
Agreed, yeah.
Okay?
We can, we can handle that.
All right.
So, Mr. Chair, just to that point, as staff was drafting a potential motion for the board in consideration that the board may be comfortable with, with the proposal, one of the conditions we had considered was enabling the ability to pull forward the 99 alternative parking plans, provided that it be a baseline, as our zoning ordinance talks about, and that the code enforcement officer finds a need for additional parking, that the applicant would need to appear before this board and work through what the final determine, to work, work through the final details of those parking spaces.
Okay.
So, certainly if the board wants to, to have a, a new plan depicting three spaces, we can work that way, or if you're comfortable with the way the condition's drafted, just bring that to your attention. So I think either way, it'd be, you know, they'd probably just take some of the existing outdoor sales area and show that it would be parking anyway, so.
All right, so it's also conditioned that if anybody else in Mainly Tubbs is at this facility, they need to come back?
Correct.
Okay, I'm good with that. I'm good with that. I don't have a problem with that. I think it covers both items, conditionally. Any other questions, comments from the board? Okay. I would like to move to approve the application of Euphoria 415 LLC, DVA Mainly Tubbs, for the expansion of usable space within the existing building at 415 Payne Road, as described in the material submitted on their behalf by FST dated November 24th, 2014. The applicant has demonstrated that the proposed activities can be occupied with the establishment of 83 parking spaces, rather than the 86 spaces which would typically be required if the minimum parking standards were to be applied. This approval is conditioned upon the use of the building is restricted to the proposed activities of Mainly Tubbs. Any change of use will need to comply with the town's minimum parking standards, or as otherwise approved by the planning board. If at any time, after construction, the code enforcement officer determines that the actual need for parking exceeds the number of spaces developed, the code enforcement officer may order the owner of the property to, to appear before the board for a determination by the board as to whether some or all of the reserved parking spaces, as depicted on the 1999 alternative parking plan, must be developed. And prior to the issuance of a building permit, the site plan shall be revised to add the notes referencing the two conditions above. The revised plan shall be provided to planning staff for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? And I show that to be unanimous. All right, our next item this evening is item number seven. Star Homes Inc. requests a preliminary review for a four lot residential subdivision, subdivision off Burnham Road, titled Burnham Heights Subdivision. Mr. Chase?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's see. As just mentioned, this is for a four lot residential subdivision within the Rural and Farm District. This subdivision triggers the provisions of the town's conservation subdivision design, which requires open space in excess, or equal to or in excess of 50% of lot area, the total lot area, and enables lots, you know, as, since 50% of the land needs to be maintained as open space, rather than the standard 80,000 square foot lot and 200 feet of frontage, the design calls for a minimum lot size of 30,000 square foot lots with 100 feet of frontage. This application was before the board, I believe it was last October 6th, for some initial discussion in the board, or the applicant is back before the board for a preliminary review, a second preliminary review. We'll note, board members will likely recall, this was previously a five lot subdivision. The applicant has tailored it to a, back to a four lot subdivision. You will have received staff comments from planning staff, the town's peer review engineer, as well as the town's engineer with regards to this item. You know, just in terms of the board's prior discussion, I think there was, the board sort of focused on traffic considerations, streetscape details, as well as wetland impacts seem to be sort of the depressing issues that the board had, had touched on, among others. I will note that we received an email today from a Mr. Spencer, which has been provided to the board on this item, with some comments as well. With that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Jay. Mr. Thompson, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bill Thompson with V H Two M Engineers. I'm here with Joe Fristacci from Star Homes. As Jay indicated, we were here in October to present a preliminary design for, again, what was a five lot subdivision on the Burnham Road. This is the Rural Zone, RF Zone, which requires a conservation design. We heard comments from the, the board, the staff, and the neighbors. We took a look at it, and Joe said, well, let's go back to a four lot subdivision. It just seemed to give a little bit more space for each lot, gave us more open space, a little more room to, to build the house and, and make the lots work the way Joe would like them to work. So, again, we have done the net residential calculations that would support, I believe, 4.7 lots. We're going to propose four. They'll have a little bit more frontage on the road, as you can see from, from my drawing here. Each lot is, they're about an acre lot. So, again, it's a conservation zone, we could go smaller than that, but this design here gives us a little over 12 acres of open space out of the 16.3, so we believe we've got, we've got open space that certainly qualifies for the ordinance. In our conversation in October, we talked about septic systems and locations. We've moved the septic systems more to the rear of the lots and created the well zones on the street part of the lots, which, which agrees with and meets with the abutting lots. So the septic system's on the back. We had a nitrate study done, which was asked by the board to have, have us complete. Nitrate plumes, again, go off to the north. None of them leave the site for the 10 milligrams per liter, so we meet that, meet that requirement. And on this plan also, it shows where well zones, where wells could be located on each lot and not be impacted by, by any septic system. We do have a 75-foot stormwater buffer on the rear of the lots, which is shown hatched. That will be pinned out to meet the, the requirements of the town, and it do need to tighten up the pins a little bit for a 50-foot spacing, which Jay indicated in his memo. We've added all the standard notes that the town asked for that usually come out of Jim Wendell's office. We've, we've made that, made that complete on the, on the sheet, on, on the subdivision plan. The board also asked us to do a grading plan, which we've done, blew the scale up a little bit, to show how the lots could be graded and not impact any of the abutting landowners, which is a requirement of any project, stormwater cannot impact down gradient properties. Very easily accomplished. We've shown a potential building site, the grading, and with the swales and ditches, we can bring the stormwater back again to the north through the stormwater buffer, which is a, which is what we'd like to do. It's a positive thing. And then out into the open space with no impact, again, to the, any of the neighboring lots. There is an existing fire tank located here across the street on the Dunne Estates Drive, less than 1,000 feet from any of the proposed homes. Again, there was concern about Again, there was concern about, you know, traffic and site distance, and we've had our traffic engineer take a look at Bill Bray's study, and comes back with a little bit of a different recommendation, which I'll go into. But to eliminate any concerns, you know, with people coming out onto Burnham Road, each of the lots with these driveway, will have a turnaround area for people coming out of the garage, back in, and be able to drive out of their lot, even though, you know, we don't believe there's an issue, and our traffic engineer is outlining some slight improvements to, again, to better the situation, if you will. But the way Joe would develop it with the house and garage, there'll be an area for any of the driveway, excuse me, the cars leaving the driveway, to be able to turn around and head out in the right direction. Again, nitrate study was done, part of our submission. So, the traffic engineers, our traffic engineer's taken a look at the site conditions out there, and there is the need or the potential for some trimming, if you will, to better the situation. Bill Bray's recommendation was to cut everything back 15 feet, which would get us to the edge of the right-of-way. Groll Palmer said, "Gee, that seems a little excessive. Site distance is measured 10 feet from the edge of pavement. If we trim back to 15, we're going to lose some mature trees and really make it look more open than it needs to be." So, Groll Palmer suggests that we measure the site distance back at 10 feet from the pavement, take, as each site is being developed, and take a look at what needs to be trimmed, what can be done to enhance, if you will, the site distance, which needs to be 305 feet based on a 35 mile an hour speed zone. There were no major issues with accomplishing that, but rather than just, you know, broad base, go back 15 feet and cut everything that's there, let's take a look at it and just have it targeted to when the lot is developed, when the homeowner gets to pick the house, do they want the driveway, garage on the left, the right? And get it approved by code that this driveway does meet safe site distance. So, that's what we'd like to see happen as part of this proposal. There will be homeowner's docs, so the management of the open space, which there are no active improvements proposed for that. But there'll also be language in there to allow the immediate abutters use of the open space for a passive recreational walk, a hike, snowshoeing, or whatever they might like to do on that. So, Joe's agreed at a request to include that, and we'll have those documents to the town before our next meeting. Jay's comments came to me with just basically probably four or five things. We did redo the net residential calculations, because we are down to a four-lot subdivision. We are in an aquifer overlay protection district. We have taken a look at the regulations on that, and there's nothing in there that can't be met. There's a concern in there, if you have a septic system or a sewer system at over 2,000 gallons per day, there are issues that you need to overcome. But we have met the stormwater requirements with the buffer and the basic standards, which is basically erosion control and stabilization of the site, which our grading plan with the addition of silt fence, and all of these notes here refer to the best management practices, which DEP utilizes and regulates. We have details of how all the improvements will be done to meet that requirement. Again, I mentioned a little while ago about the iron rod delineation on the buffers. We've got a few of them spaced out a little bit more than 50 feet. Final plan will have the correct spacing on those. We talked about the site clearing at the street. Jim Wendell had one comment. He wanted a 15-foot drainage easement, drainage and maintenance easement at the street in front of the two open space areas. No issue with us, so we certainly, we have shown them, and we'll make that part of the final approval. What had in current, peer review for the town, came back with just a couple of general notes about the no buffer strips, again, the erosion control sheet needed some silt fence, and other than that, they said all previous comments have been adequately addressed. So, with that, again, we think we've gone back to the drawing board, brought back less dense development, more open space, and I think we've met or accomplished the requirements for the preliminary submission. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bill. Normally, I'd be turning this over to the board, as we have had public comment on this item before, but at the board's discretion, we do have the ability to offer additional public comment. I think this evening we will do just that, and give the, give some of the local people an opportunity to come back and discuss some of their concerns. So, with that, I will turn it over to public comment. Once again, I would ask that people approach the podium, state their name and address for the record. We ask that you try to keep your comments to five minutes or less.
Good evening, I'm Charles Spencer. I live at 125 Burnham Road, which would be the home directly across from the proposed houses being built on Burnham Road. I did send an email this morning to Mr. Chase. I don't know if the board has had a chance to read that, but I will read it to you. Dear Mr. Chase, I'm writing to you to express concerns. My wife Eileen and I have on the proposed Burnham Heights subdivision. We do not agree with the comment that was made by the planning board member during the last meeting comparing homes and road frontage on Burnham Road to homes on Black Point Road. Comparing neighborhoods built in the 1960s through 1980 to a 2014, should be '14, development is not an accurate comparison. The building lot size is smaller in the Black Point area. There are sidewalks, additional width to the roads for pedestrian and bike traffic, sidewalks, and additional road width is not designed in this area. As stated in our last letter to the planning board, we have concerns with the amount of homes proposed, and such a small section of road frontage. We understand that Mr. Fritacci is trying to obtain the full potential out of developing his property. We do not agree with his proposed redesign of now building four homes on 713 feet of road frontage. The four-home proposal will still not conform to the character of the established homes on Burnham Road that have 200 foot of road frontage. If three homes were developed along the stretch of Burnham Road, they would allow, they would follow the design of the neighborhood with the 200 road frontage. The planning board expressed that a traffic study was not needed. As we stated in our previous letter to the planning board, communities use this section of road to bypass traffic congestion on Routes 22 and 114. The section of road is on a curve, and traffic does not heed the posted limit of 35 miles per hour. Adding four driveways in this short stretch of road on a curve could create a hazardous situation for public safety. And I'd like to add to that is that it's nice to know that they were going to put like a bit of a hammerhead for their driveways, but there's no guarantee that the homeowner would use the hammerhead as a turnaround to drive out facing Burnham Road. The trees on Burnham Road are tall and have a shallow root system because of the high water table. The trees near a clear-cut area become unstable when surrounding trees are cut down. What is the width of the proposed tree buffer, which the gentleman just explained, between the new homes and road? Will the buffer zone be designed using existing trees as a buffer, or add new trees and shrubs? And also with the amount of homes being placed in this area, I don't know if you're aware, but the previous owner of this property did do a bit of selective cutting in that, and harvested a lot of wood two years ago. And so, with more homes, with the homes proposed there, now they're going to even cut down more trees, and it will basically be looking like a clear-cut area. The map representing the abutting homes is not to scale that what we had seen online, which misrepresents on how close the new property line is to the existing homes. And we hope that the planning board considers our concerns and makes the right recommendation to Mr. Fritacci on developing his property. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer.
I'm Jana Whipple, and I live to the left at 120 Burnham Road, the left of the proposed development. I have only a question of the board, because what's been hounding me since this happened, since, when we moved in eight years ago, we knew we would have neighbors eventually. Our lot, as we said before, is very, very close. The well is 11 feet away from the lot line. So, we knew we're probably going to end up with a close neighbor at some point. We're not antisocial, we're not opposed to having neighbors, well aware that there could be the potential for three houses put in there. We're not, I don't want to use the word protesting, but we're not against three houses going in there, having three new neighbors. That's not a problem for us. What I don't understand is, when you have a law in town, i.e. a conservation law, why is it so easy for people to come in and change that law? That's just been sort of hounding me, that every, that we have laws in place for a reason, and then it seems to be very easy for people to just come in and take those existing laws and overturn them. And that's what keeps me up at night. Why is it that once we have a law, somebody can come in and just reverse it, just because they want to make a little bit of money? And I'm, believe me, I believe in capitalism, but that's my only comment. I just, it's just a question that I have.
All right, thank you, Ms. Whipple.
I'm Cindy Healan, and I live at 128 Burnham Road, which is to the right side of the proposed subdivision. And I appreciate the efforts that are being made to try to make this to fit in with the neighborhood a little bit more. And a couple of things that I just wanted to reiterate that other people have said are, one thing that this map is not to scale as to where the houses are placed on either side. And personally, my house is about 25 feet from the edge of the lot, much bigger than what it looks like on this drawing. And I have concerns of a small lot with a house being placed, you know, that close to the edge, close to my lot. I know these are, these are small lots, and having lived there for 33 years, I'm really concerned with the drainage and, you know, what our recourse would be if we start suddenly having a lot more water in our yards, because I've seen over the years, when we have wet springs, what that looks like out there, and, you know, even on those lots. So, even though they're making efforts to fit in with the neighborhood, I still see some issues, and would like to see the lots be widened a little bit more to fit the place, and also some assurances that I'm not going to be looking out my, suddenly looking out my bedroom window and having somebody, a house 25 feet away or 40 feet away. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Healan. All right, seeing none, I'll turn it over to the board. Mr. Mazur, can I start with you?
Yeah, but I want to start with Jay. Jay, can you explain, so it's understood, how the conservation?
Yeah, in terms of the zoning, yeah, this application is meeting the existing zoning, the conservation subdivision design standards. Essentially allow for the development of a parcel to be developed in what I would term a density-neutral pattern. So, if this, let's call it 16-acre lot were to be developed under standard RF zoning, i.e. roughly two acres per lot with 200 feet of frontage, there could be four lots, say. So, what the ordinance allows or requires in the RF zone, if you have a lot that has, meets certain threshold, i.e. in this instance, greater than one acre of wetlands on the lot, you're required to do a conservation subdivision design. What that means is automatically, half of the lot, the gross lot, needs to go into open space, at least 50%. And as I said, to get to sort of density-neutral, it allows for reduced lot sizes. So, rather than an 80,000 square foot lot, you could develop a minimum of 30,000 square feet. They can be bigger. In this case, some of the lots are, range up from 38,000 to 45,000, roughly an acre in size, I think, as was stated. The other reduction that's allowed through the existing conservation subdivision standards in the zoning ordinance is from a reduction of the standard 200 feet of frontage, which is required for a single lot division, is through the subdivision process, it's a minimum frontage of 100 feet. Again, that's a minimum, you can't exceed that, and I think by and large, the frontages that I was looking at today range in the 130 to 150 range, plus or minus. So, the current proposal does meet the existing zoning, so there hasn't been any modifications to that in that regard, so.
Thank you.
I hope I've addressed that question.
Now, having said that, can I ask a few questions, please? In going through the materials that were presented to the board and also staff comments, I'd still like, because you went through this quickly for me, there is still some concern about the net residential calculation. So, I, I'm not sitting here feeling that there's agreement between you and staff on that calculation. So, can you clarify that for me?
Yes. The net residential calculation has been corrected. We have a request for four lots. You take the total area with the deducts, divided by the underlying zone of 80,000 square feet, comes out to be 4.69 lots. That's taking out this easement, wetlands, and coming up with 4.69 lots, which exceeds the proposal for four. And the previous one was based on this easement not being in existence, and we were looking for five lots on that calculation. So, it's been corrected to reflect the existing conditions on this plan.
I haven't had a chance to see the numbers, but that certainly does make, it makes sense with the applicants talking about that easement area, pretty small, and so the plans we have do show that was five, it was plus five lots, and now they're saying it's four and a half lots, which amounts to four when we do our net res determination. So, certainly something with, a detail we would require to be seen prior to any final approval, certainly.
Gotcha. And Jim Wendell's comments, address those, because you went by that again quickly for me, the 15-foot drainage and maintenance easement.
Okay, the only comment I got from Jim Wendell was dated December 2nd. The town requires a 15-foot wide drainage and maintenance easement along the frontage of open space with Burnham Road.
That's what I'm referring to.
Correct. That's these two areas here, outside of the right-of-way, out of the lot, he wants an additional 15-foot easement for the potential of any drainage or maintenance to the shoulder, to the edge of the road, and be able to go on to that open space, which is, which will be owned by the homeowners. So, that easement will be granted to the town.
One general comment, and I understand when there's new construction, there has to be some sacrifice of wood and so forth, but I'd like to go on record as saying I'd like to see the disruption as little as possible. And I understand, again, understanding that, of course, there has to be some renovation to the area, but keeping it down to as minimal as possible.
I think the applicant would too, whether he builds the homes or not, is, I think everybody likes a little privacy, the side yard, not going to cut right up to the line, and again, along the street. I think we have an opportunity with a 25-foot setback to try to keep as much of that short of the slight trimming for site distance. So, I think, I think the same thing out in the country here. I think they'll, they'll work real hard to minimize the cutting.
And one other comment that I want to emphasize- And one other comment that I want to emphasize, actually two more, but one is the putting in writing for future homeowners, the Aqua Protection Overlay, to make sure that everybody understands the rules and regulations now and going forward.
Correct. I agree. There'll be a note on the final plan.
And the last thing, because we've had other projects and so far, so good with the other projects in which there was a concern about drainage and running off into, about his properties, to make sure that that doesn't happen. And I, and I know I'm being general there, but I'm going to make the general comment that hopefully that will be addressed during construction.
Let me just try to clarify the side property lines. I do plan to build-
Excuse me, Mr. Faschi, could you state your name? Thank you.
I'm sorry. Joe Faschi, I'm the applicant with Star Homes. We're planning to build houses no more than 50 to 60 feet wide. That will give you an 80 to 90-foot unbuildable area or unbuilt area on the sides. So, that would be somewhere in the vicinity of 40 to 45 feet to the property line on each lot. We did put in a no-cut buffer on the lots to assure that the trees would remain on the property lines. I don't believe in cutting trees down. I try to cut as few as I can and let the potential homebuyer basically choose what they want to cut down. So, we are trying to keep in the general character of the neighborhood and leave as many trees as possible, both on the front and sides. So, hopefully, the narrower houses, these lot, these properties were increased when we dropped one lot. So, they are wider lots now, so that will give us the opportunity to leave more trees.
Thank you. That's it. Can I have a, ask a point of clarification, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Just to be clear, on the plan set that the board has, there's a no-cut area in the back of the lots. There's a 75-foot stormwater buffer, and I thought I heard reference that you had talked about maintaining a no-cut along all the side, all the property line?
On the two sides, on the two sides. We do have requests to cut trees down in the front because of traffic, but we will maintain as many trees as we possibly can. I think there's a note there that we would leave trees that have a diameter of greater than six inches, but that's something that, you know, we will talk to you about, what your requests are, we will, we will honor it. But on the front, there will be a, probably a no-cut buffer also. These houses are not, I think your setback is 25 feet from the property line. We're looking to put them back at least 40 feet to allow that turnaround, that driveway turnaround, so that the people can drive out as opposed to backing out into that busy street, or that street. Okay?
All set. Thank you.
All set. Dave?
My only comment is that I agree with the recommendations of the Goro Palmer study regarding the cutting the trees along the road. In this case, the less the better, as far as the number of trees that you cut down. And I think that would be better for the entire neighborhood as far as aesthetics.
Thank you, Dave. Nick?
Yeah, I think, I believe this is the project that I was questioning about your septic placement, your well placement, and I appreciate the extra time you took to go back and look at those items. Quick question for staff. Is it typical to put well-drilling information on a plan somewhere in the notes here? Because I, when I was reading the report here, the Sevian Mayor Engineers, they basically said that they, they thought dug wells should be prohibited on the properties. And I just didn't know if that's something that would show up on a Mylar or-
If it's some, if it's an issue that the board's concerned about in terms of the development of the lots, then certainly I think that would make sense to show up on the, on the Mylar. But if it, if there's a concern with a dug well versus drilled well, then I do think that would make sense as a note on the plan. So-
Yeah, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I would, I would feel more comfortable if that was on the, in the notes somewhere. Outside of that, I'd kind of echo the comments from the rest of the, my board members here, you know, take as few trees as possible. And for those of you that are neighbors, I just wanted to let you know that from, from where we said, you know, we're looking at something that is fairly in compliance with what we, what we deal with for standards. And I appreciate that you have those concerns, and I hope you guys can appreciate that what we're looking at here meets the town's standards for the most part. So, with that said, all set.
Great. Thank you, Nick. Mr. Fowles, before I go to you, I'm going to do something most unusual. And since this is my last meeting, I am going to have a soft spot this evening. I know that Mr. Benedict, I believe, wanted to make public comment, was not here at the time public comment was available. I will permit it, but ask that it remain at five minutes or less. Five minutes or less. Please approach the podium.
There's quite chaos in the neighborhood with this projected project going in. And I'll get right to the quick, real quick, because I've had a builder's supervisor's license in the state of Massachusetts, as well as been as a septic inspector in the state of Massachusetts for over 40 years. I'd like to know where the septics are going, because we have got one heck of a water problem on the whole Burnham Road. And if you go one or two houses down from mine, there's sitting water eight months out of the year. On my own house, which is right across the street from Jim and Jana Whipple, my terrain in the front of the house, which has got the ditches, has water eight months out of the year. And I know that every house in the area has a sump pump for bailing the basements out. And a lot of people have raised septic because of the water problem. Another thing I find a little strange was, everybody else's property, if you dig into it, is clay, not sand. It's clay. And one of the major thoughts in the neighborhood is, especially behind Jim and Jana Whipple, is that water runoff from these places, because his spot is a little bit lower, that the water runoff is going to end up in his backyard. And I wanted, I wanted to know on the, on the septic, what, where they're intended to be built. It looks like it's the backyard, but it could be either one.
I think we'll, the- Yeah, we'll, we'll ask the question, Mr. Benedict.
I'm sorry. I see from the, from the A, 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 A,[1294.13]
Um, I can't account for what else is happening in, in the neighborhood, but we have, we have dug test pits that show we have a sand condition. The limiting factor, fifteen to sixteen inches for a seasonal groundwater, um, and we've designed, or they will be designed, based on that, uh, that limitation. Surface water, again, has, has been shown in our grading plan to, to be heading off into, into the north direction. These houses will all have a positive foundation drain, discharging at the low elevation here. That's why the houses, the grading plan shows that the houses are being, uh, the grading picked up a little bit to get a full foundation. There'll be no need for any sump pumps, and again, a positive outlet to the, to the rear of all those lots. So, um, I think that was about the extent of the question.
Question I had, and apologize if I missed it when you were going through things earlier. In terms of the, um, the demarcation of the no disturb buffer, uh, it had been suggested that, as we typically like to see, that something, uh, some sort of more definitive demarcation along the lines of a split rail fence, a split rail fence or something, something a little more visible and permanent, if you will, than, than a, just a pin be used, because those things have, sometimes tend to disappear over time. I didn't know if you had a response to that, or if that was something that was being considered.
I don't, I guess I defer to the applicant. Um, pins are a requirement recommended by DEP and, and the town, so, uh, we haven't had, um, many projects until recently that, that's been a request for something a little more above ground, a little more significant, but, um, you know, they will be set, red capped, left up, exposed, with a buffer cap on it, this is no disturb zone. So, I defer to Joe, if he wants, they're asking for recom, uh, an agreement if we're willing to put a split rail fence along the front of these, uh, stormwater buffers to keep development and activity from migrating into them.
Are you talking on the front side or the rear?
The rear.
This would be the, the rear.
On the rear. Well, we've done that at, um, Green Acres.
Right.
We are doing that at Sawgrass. Um, we've put them on the corners. I really don't wanna put, you know, uh, seven hundred feet of, of a split rail fence along the back. I don't mind putting it on the corners and coming in maybe with three or four sections, uh, to identify the property lines and basically the back. That still will give them access to snowmobile, go out back for whatever reason they might pick blueberries. Um, so I don't mind doing it on the corners, a couple of, uh, a couple of sections.
Okay, yeah, and certainly, I'm, I'm not speaking for the board in any of this, but, uh, for me, I think that, that would be fine, it's sort of a, a visual cue that...
Yeah, and, and hopefully the trees that we're leaving in back will also go to market too, and not, not just the, the pins.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Um, beyond that, I don't think I have any other questions per se. I mean, this, this is one, we've talked about this in the past, that, or it seems that virtually all of the new residential developments or proposed developments that we're seeing these days are conservation subdivisions, and I think that's largely a function of what's, uh, what's available in town to develop at this point. And some are better than others in terms of their, the way that they naturally lay out and, and what's possible. I struggle with this one a little bit, partly because of the location on a, a busier road. Uh, I think that most of, and all of the other projects we've seen tend to be more internal. What we would use more typically see is sort of residential or subdivision-type layouts, where this is on a well-established borderline thoroughfare. And I, I would agree with the comment, and I, I think I made the comment last time we talked about this, that there are some differences between this and a, something like a Black Point Road. But I think that, um, you know, I, certainly the reduction from, from five lots to four helps. And I think we can strike the right balance between safety and aesthetics in terms of sightlines and buffers, um, that hopefully that, it will be, it will be doable. I'd like to echo my fellow board members in saying that, you know, the, the, the least we can remove, the better. Sort of take a case-by-case look at it in terms of sight, sight distances. And, um, I think also compared to some other, uh, recent sub, uh, conservation subdivision proposals, drainage is obviously always a concern, and we do appreciate that. But at least to me, this one, uh, this one has a grading that's a little better than some others that, that I've seen recently. So, obviously, it all has to be done right, but, um, I think, I think it's achievable. That's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Mazur.
Yeah, I have a question for, for Jay. Jay, I know this is precedes you, and me for that matter. Has there been a big change in the topography? Because I'm hearing clay versus sand in the same general area, and what's, where's the discrepancy?
I'm not sure. Uh, the only information I know is the dug wells that we have with the applicant in terms of, uh, I don't know that, I've reviewed other projects out in this area, I wasn't around when Dunn Estates went in, so, um, I can't speak to that.
But you understand where my confusion is a little bit, that I'm hearing Mr. Benedict say there's a lot of clay area, and I'm hearing the applicant say...
And we did hear, I mean, one of the, one of the concerns that was raised by staff back in October was concerns about, this area is very flat, there's very little relief for stormwater. Public Works Directors and, and Jim Wendell identified that, you know, drainage issues along Burnham Road are something that they're dealing with often, and that was an issue that, um, was expressed to the applicant at that meeting. And I think, you know, I think with their grading plan, they've sought to address that to the best of their ability, but there is, um, this is a very flat area with very little relief to be found in terms of where water can go. So that, that's certainly been a significant issue that, that our engineers have been looking at. But in terms of, you know, why, why, why there might be clay across the street or at someone else's yard, and, and the reports we have are that it's sandy materials, I can't speak to that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ron. Um, I don't have a lot of questions. I guess what I'd like to do is a little bit of a recap of some of the items that I've heard tonight, and maybe hopefully provide information, if not clarification, on some items. But, uh, certainly I remember the, of members of the public have come forth, and, you know, the first concern I heard was issues regarding traffic and issues regarding line of sites for driveways, et cetera. And we're meeting the line of sites that we need to meet in order to, uh, to handle the speed limit for the area that these lots are being provided. If there is a, um, concern about the speed that actually occurs there, that's, that is a code enforcement issue, it's not a planning board issue. So there's really not much that we can do in regards to that. So again, what we have to do as a planning board is we have to look to see, are the ordinances being followed? And that's really the only leverage that we have. If the ordinances, ordinances are in fact being followed, we do not have any real ability to be able to deny an applicant unless we see something that's not in accordance with the ordinances. So, uh, the situation that we have here is, I think, as Mr. McGee indicated earlier, the applicant is in fact following the ordinances. So when I look at line of sight, when I look at traffic, uh, when I look at the comment about, uh, somebody feels that the conservation law is being changed, when in fact the conservation subdivision is actually being followed to the letter of the law. When I look at home placement and I hear concerns about side setbacks, I understand, I appreciate the comment, believe me. But in reality, I think that the, that the side setback requirement in this area is only fifteen feet. So code enforcement could come out and say, if you're fifteen feet, one inch, you're in compliance. So I mean, it's, it's a very, very difficult thing. If the applicant is willing to put the homes in the middle of the lot, to try to increase that side buffer, and in fact, um, try to keep the most trees that they can keep, to try to provide some kind of buffering, is really not much more we can ask for an applicant to do in that particular case. I think that if there is some, um, something that the applicant does in, in regards to providing turnarounds on each piece of property or each driveway, um, to me, that makes a lot of sense, um, that they try to do that. And certainly, I am not in a position to say that nobody can ever back out of their driveway. I would wonder if people back out of their driveway today, and if they do, is that the right thing for them to be doing? So, it's very difficult for us to say that you can't back out of your driveway to people who come in and buy four units at some point, um, after the fact. But I do encourage the applicant to make sure that he provides a turnaround, some kind of hammerhead, uh, in the driveway, so that the homeowner can in fact leave their property safely. I mean, that makes sense. But there's nothing in our ordinance that says you have to provide a turnaround so that people don't back into the street. I see people, I live off Black Point Road, I see people backing out of Black Point Road all the time, and I think, you gotta be kidding me. You know, I mean, that just absolutely makes no sense. I live off a side road, and I back into my driveway every evening. And I live on a side road, so I'm not on any main road, and there's only two houses past me on the street. So it's like, people need to use common sense, we can't really legislate that, or we can't, we don't have ordinances to protect people from being unsafe, unfortunately, at times. Septic system-wise, I think, uh, the applicant has asked or answered that question. Again, my concern regarding that, as we've seen recently, and we will continue to see more and more, as we try to develop property here in the town of Scarborough, and I think Mr. Fellows alluded to it, one of the problems that we have today, if you will, in Scarborough is that the undeveloped land is not the most desirable land that we have left in the town. So a lot of the land that we're trying to develop now has a lot of wetland on it, and because of that, it forces the applicant to have to build conservation subdivisions, and the town recognizing that says, hey, let's protect as much property as we can in terms of open space, let's, let's be as smart as we can in, in the development, not create more sprawl, actually try to minimize, um, the impact that we're having to a town. And again, as Mr. Fellows indicated, the one thing that's a little bit different on this particular one than what we normally see, is that usually a piece of property will actually have a street, and then all of the houses will enter out onto that street, and then there's one access onto a road such as Burnham Road. The reality of it is, you can't do it on this piece of property. It's reality. Does that mean that the applicant should be permitted from being able to do what he can do? I don't think we as a board really wanna make that decision here, because, as I said earlier, I think the applicant is meeting all the ordinances, and it's very, very difficult for us to try to deny, um, uh, an application just because we may not feel it, it feels good, right? I mean, because that's kinda like what we're saying. Do we think this feels good in this location? Well, we might not, um, but it's not a personal preference that we have to make on the board, that's not our right. Our, um, our objective is to make sure that we meet the ordinances that are in place, and that we're not, um, denying applicants wrongly, um, but in fact, that they do meet all the codes and ordinances that we have in place. So, I don't know if that helps. I know it's not a feel-good thing for people who aren't exactly excited about this, but, um, unless we as a board can find something at some point that says this is clearly out of compliance with an ordinance, our hands are somewhat tied in terms of whether we can approve or deny. I know that we're not at that point tonight, a future board will sit and make that judgment, but I think that's kinda like where we are. I don't know, having said all of that, we don't need any approvals this evening, is that correct, or is this a preliminary approval?
I would...
Or a review? Said preliminary review on the agenda, so I'm trying to...
I would imagine the applicant, if the board were so inclined, would appreciate action on preliminary, uh, approval, if the board feels that they've met those standards. Certainly, as you depicted, a preliminary approval, the town's process will require two-step approval. There's a preliminary approval, and then a final approval, which sort of the issues that were talked about here today get sort of codified. The note on the plan regarding dug wells would be established. Any notation regarding limited, limiting clearing, those sorts of things that the board has raised here today would be dealt with, um, moving forward. So unless there's any significant issues the board sees, typically, preliminary approval would be granted at this time.
All right, so, I mean, personally, I have not seen anything that would, um, prompt me not to make such a proposal, so I shall. Uh, I move that we give preliminary approval to Star Homes Inc. request for a four-lot residential subdivision off Burnham Road titled Burnham Heights Subdivision. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Mazur, thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? And I show that to be unanimous.
Thank you.
I will move on to item number eight, our town planners' report.
Um, let's see, uh, just two things to mention. So typically, we meet every three weeks, with the holidays sort of fitting within that three-week timeframe. Our first meeting of 2015 will be January fifth, so that will be our next meeting, is January fifth of 2015. I'll also note that we do have two outgoing members, Mr. Befard and Mr. Paul have served, Mr. Befard has served four years, Mr. Paul nine years, seven of those as chair. Thank you both for your, your efforts to the town. Um, I do know the council has at least, um, had first reading on appointing one additional member to the board, um, and so hopefully that'll be done by our January meeting, and I believe they have two other names they're considering, and trying to figure out what position people would like to be on with the town. So, I imagine we will have a full board shortly, but I know we'll at least have one, or likely to have one new member in January. So that's what I have for you.
Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. An administrative amendment report.
I do not have anything to report at this time.
Uh, any correspondence that has not been previously mentioned? Seeing none, planning board comments?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mazur.
Uh, one comment and then a, uh, motion. My comment is, I wanna thank the chair for his advice, leadership, and, uh, expertise. He's taught me a lot, and I certainly am going to miss him on this board, but I hope he will continue to be involved in all of the town, uh, boards as much as time allows for him, and I wanna personally thank him. As far as motion, since he is leaving, uh, we need to, uh, have a new board, uh, as far as chair, vice chair, and secretary is concerned, and I'd like to move the following, that Mr. Corey Fellows be chairman, that Ron Mazur be vice chairman, and Mr. John Dupont be secretary.
I believe that that'll, that action will be taken up at the next meeting. I don't need that there's a formal motion, is there, Mr. Chase?
He made that in a form of a motion.
He made it, he did. All right. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second.
Thank you, Dave.
Is there any discussion?
I have some discussion, but more from a, Robert rules, point of view, more than anything. I just don't know the wisdom of an outgoing chairman voting for a current chairman's spot. I, I have no problem with the slate as proposed, I just don't know if that's, that would be typical in a, to have a outgoing body, because you kinda reconstitute once you add in new members.
I, I believe that...
I don't have a problem with the slate as proposed, I have a problem with the process right now.
I'll be, I will be happy to abstain, if that makes it easier.
Well, if you abstain, then I should abstain.
Exactly, so then are we down to three? Are we still good on that?
A three vote is a satisfactory vote?
I, I hate to be this guy, I really do, especially on your last night, but I'm gonna do it. I, I can't do it. I, I think when you have a, a new full board, it should be something that is taken up at the start.
Who leads the board, who leads the meeting then, next time?
I think, um, I think your, your current vice chairman does, and they're right up into the point.
Well then, would you like to add other members then, on the slate?
No, absolutely not. That, I mean, this is why I'm saying, I hate to be that guy, but I also feel it's awkward to have an old board voting for new chairmanship positions without the, the presence of new board members. Like, the outgoing city council just didn't elect a new, you know, a town, you know, as pro, as chair of the council. The, the new council selected their chair. That's, that's all I'm, I'm pointing out here. And I hate, I literally hate to be that guy.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
I believe that Mr. Mazur is responding to a request from a previous meeting where we suggested that a slate of officers be brought forth to the board for consideration. At that time, it was my intent, at least, to suggest that Mr. Mazur, as one of his duties as secretary, bring that slate of officers to the board and advise the board who he was bringing forth as a slate of officers, with the intent that that slate would then be voted on at the first meeting where the new board convenes, which would be January fifth.
Okay.
So, that clearly was my intent when my request was made to Mr. Mazur to bring a slate of officers, um, to this board for consideration. I think we can potentially solve your concern if Mr. Mazur were to...
I don't.
...remove his motion. And that...
To recommend...
The motion would then be brought up on the meeting of the fifth, we could probably resolve this issue.
I support the recommendation.
But I, it's, that's up to Mr. Mazur and, um...
That's fine.
And Dave, so if they would like to handle it that way, then that would, that would work.
Recommendation for the next board meeting.
Okay.
Highly satisfied.
Now, Robert's rules, Dave, where are we?
Put him to work right at the end.
I, I think...
On this one, I'm not sure.
I think you actually should take an official vote and let it fail.
Oh, as far as the motion?
As far as the motion? He could withdraw his motion.
I'd withdraw the motion.
Do you withdraw your second?
Uh, yes.
You do? So the motion is removed.
Now I'll make a recommendation.
Now you can make a recommendation.
Of the following.
All right.
For the record, I am very supportive of the recommendation, Mr. Mazur.
All right. Nice. Moving forward. Other board comments?
Uh, I don't know if...
I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, I just wanna thank the board and, uh, for allowing me to, uh, serve with you. It's been a pleasure. I've certainly, um, enjoyed my time here, and I certainly enjoyed, um, watching, uh, our chairman lead the group. I think, uh, you've been more than qualified.
Thank you.
And, uh, I think you've taken us through a lot of, uh, tough spots with your leadership. And I wish the board well going forward, and I, uh, encourage you to, uh, read that book.
Mr. Chair, I was remiss in, uh, thanking David also for his time on, on the board. He's been a, uh, welcome addition, and, uh, I'm certainly going to, uh, miss him also, and I'll, you know, wish him well in his adventures, and I know he's been, he's gonna do a little more traveling than he had been before, so I wish him well on his adventures, and then thank him.
Thank you.
Now, I will continue with the, uh, thank yous, because it has literally been a huge pleasure to watch, uh, you serve this community. I've learned so much, uh, just, just watching and being around you and seeing how you, you handle yourself in these meetings, and the, the amount of time and care you've taken with all of the projects that have come before us. You've always looked out for the interest of this community, and I think it's, it's admirable that you have served us for this long and in this capacity, and it really has been a privilege to watch you, um, as, as you've, you've led this committee forward. And I'm, I'm not gonna leave, uh, Dave out here. He is, he's been a pleasure as a seatmate. Um, you know, we get to, uh, do the little nudge, nudge, wink, wink thing once in a while, it's, and, and you know what, he, he's...
All above board.
All above board, of course, but, uh, the, the, you know, it's, it's just been a pleasure. All of you, you know, just true professionals, um, this community's so fortunate to have people like you that are willing to, to do this. I know the pay is exorbitant, and, uh, you wouldn't do it otherwise, but, uh, you're gonna, you're gonna miss the paycheck from this, right? Uh, all zero dollars of it, but it's fantastic. I, I really appreciate both, both of your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll make you guys squirm just a little bit more. Um, no, I'd also like to...
I'm gonna tear out of you guys.
Yeah, I'd like to thank, uh, David and our, and our chairman. It's been a pleasure working with you both, and both very sort of steadying presences and, um, uh, Mr. Chair, you've, you've really set a very high standard over the seven years that you've led the board in terms of always being very clearly prepared, and thorough, and methodical, and, um, just sort of really keeping an even keel, and, um, you've definitely set the bar high for, for those who'll follow you, and, uh, learned a lot as well, so, thank you. And I'm glad that you'll still be around, uh, in other capacities here with the town and, and Town Hall and...
I certainly hope to be, so...
And look forward to that.
Um, I'd like to make a few comments. I've never known, have been briefed, so I apologize to the board in, in advance, but...
Thorough and methodical.
First of all, thank you for all your kind words, I really appreciate that, and, um, I have thoroughly enjoyed, uh, my time in the board, um, and working with the applicants. It's really kind of interesting and fun to be able to drive around the town and see certain things that you know that you've had an impact on. I'm sure somebody on the board will continue my desire to not have painted sidewalks. There's probably applicants who cringe when I say that, but I hope somebody, somebody continues to do that. But just to give you a little bit of, of background, things that you may not know, and, and Ms. Ogless is not here tonight, but it was a little over nine years ago when Susan approached me and asked me to join the planning board, because they had a need, and so I wanted to thank her for actually reaching out to me and getting my interest up and, um, uh, having me get on the board and serving with her for a couple of years before she turned out and then left us, and came back for a very short stint, and then actually left us again, and I hope now she's back again for a little while. So, I wanna thank her. I certainly wanna reach out and thank, thank the staff. I, I can't say enough about the impact that both Dan and Jay have... I can't say enough about the impact that both Dan and Jay have on the results of this planning board. It's phenomenal, the effort that they put forth, the information that they provide us. They make our job very easy. And the town of Scarborough is incredibly lucky to have the two of them on board. Certainly, it goes without saying, Carol, who used to serve in the past in Karen's position, and, you know, the person in the background is Robin, who keeps a lot of things happening, who we don't get to see very much, but want to reach out to her as well. Past board members, certainly, this board has been a lot of fun to be with. And I think we've done a lot done. I think we've been effective. And I think we have in fact tried to work with the applicants, tried to work with the townspeople. And I think we've done a pretty decent job overall, so appreciate that. I do have one thing. Mr. Fellows and I have been on this board the longest, Corey, eight of the nine years that I've been here. And I feel like I do need to leave him something, maybe for the board to remember me by, but certainly something for Corey to remember me by. The lifesavers that need to come to the meeting so that they can be passed around. And I didn't want him to be empty-handed out of the gates.
Are those nine years old?
No, they're not nine years old. Actually, that bag is fairly fresh. It's been replenished, but I definitely wanted to leave something to Corey for everybody to remember by. And I'll leave this one in the bag, but we can kind of pass that on.
Thank you.
And certainly, last but not least, want to thank my wife. As you know, there's a lot that goes into this. This few minutes that we spend is minimal compared to what happens week after week, so little shout-out to her. Thank you. And with that, I shall make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? And good evening.